Good evening. I'd like to bring the August 6th New London Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Well, Jamie, you're first. We're going to start with you.
Button there. Hi, I'm Jamie Hess, Chair of the Energy Committee. And I guess I'll just say a few words and then I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. So first of all, I want to thank the Board of Selectmen and the town administrators, both past and present, and the Energy Committee and the voters at town meeting, who without everyone working together, we would not be moving forward with solar panels on the roof of the fire station. I think it's going to be really exciting. It's going to save money for the town. It's going to be the first solar array that the town actually owns and benefits from entirely. And not only that, but it looks like we'll be eligible for a 30% federal rebate on every penny we spend. So that's excellent news and even better when that 30% comes back to the town. The other piece of good news I'd like to share really quickly is I ran some quick numbers and the existing municipal solar arrays, which are not owned by the town, and we entered into on a break-even basis. Because of the increase in ever-source electric rates, the town is actually making money off those solar panels as well. Like I said, they were only supposed to break even, but we're now making money off all the surplus electricity that's generated by those panels. So another piece of good news. So now the not-so-good news, which is that the Community Power Initiative, which was very successful right since its inception in April of 2023, now Community Power is no longer delivering savings relative to ever-source. And the differential has become great enough that the Energy Committee at its last meeting voted to recommend switching over our largest electric accounts from Community Power to ever-source for the six-month period that begins now. And the Energy Committee is going to be keeping an eye on things. And every time new rates are announced, and the next rate announcement will be in December, we will reevaluate that stance. But that's the Energy Committee's recommendation. And making that switch will save something like $4,000 for the town over the six-month period from now through the end of January.
Jamie, is there any penalty for getting out of the contracts we signed with them?
Well, there's no contract with Community Power, so there's no penalty. And you can switch back and forth as many times as you want. It's just, you know, a few keystrokes on a website or a quick phone call. And that's all it takes.
And what about individual homeowners? Would you recommend that they get out of it as well?
Well, Janet, that's a really good question. So the increase in rates, or let's say, okay, if you're... So 71% of the town is on Community Power at the moment, with the remainder split between ever-source and third-party suppliers. So for the 71% who are on Community Power, the average homeowner will save about $20 a month by switching from Community Power to ever-source. So there are benefits to New London and to the state as a whole for having Community Power survive and continuing to support it. And I can go into those benefits, but I don't want to take up too much time. So basically, it's a personal decision. Do you support Community Power? And are you willing to pay $20 a month more to ensure the survival of Community Power? Or would you rather take those $20 a month savings and switch to ever-source from now through January? And I'm happy to take it up with the Energy Committee and have one of us write articles for Municipal Matters in the Intertown Record to explain the choice and the pros and cons.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie.
Okay, my pleasure.
All right. Rich, do you have any questions? Okay, do we have to vote on this?
Well, that's not a question.
Okay, all right. So do you both agree that we should switch back to ever-source? Okay, all right.
Jamie, can I just ask, so are we, then we're committing for six months? Is that right?
There's no commitment to either ever-source or Community Power. So we can switch back and forth once a month if we choose to. But it's going to be a lot of work if we do that. And since the rates are not changing again until the beginning of February, whatever we decide to do now, we might as well stick with it for six months and then reevaluate. And one other thing is that the town has something like 25 electric accounts. And some of them, like the Bandstand or Buckland Beach, use so little electricity that it really doesn't make sense to switch those. So we're only talking about the major accounts, like here at Whipple and Buker, that use huge amounts of electricity.
Thank you, Jamie. Colin has a question.
Hi, Colin. Okay, well done.
Thank you, appreciate it. So Jamie, if I recall quickly, everyone was opted into the Community Power, right? They were flipped over? Okay.
Well, the 71% were.
Right. The folks who were on a third party already.
Were not.
Were not.
And the folks who had rooftop or backyard solar were not.
Okay, so that represents the 30%, give or take.
And a few other smaller groups.
I think the idea of having some communication, I... We probably all get correspondence from ever-source. I don't get any correspondence from Community Power. And ever-source, I just happened to get it yesterday. Their default service rate says, "The cost of energy supply purchased at market prices passed directly to you with no markup or profit. What we pay is what you pay." Which suggests, given their volume, they probably get a pretty good market price, demand and volume. So I think it's important that we probably get educated on what Community Power has for leverage on volume and price versus whatever source is beginning to do on transferring their costs directly to the customer so that citizens can understand what's happening to their bills long-term. Right? If you could do that, it'd be appreciated.
Okay. Should I do that right now?
No, you don't have to do it. I just think, I think that, I don't know who, I don't know the Community Power business model. I don't know who manages it, who runs it.
Jamie's on the board.
So whoever's running that business should be sending out information to its customers, explaining what their rates are, explaining why their rates are better than the alternative rates, explaining the benefit of it. Because we took an entire community and flipped them. So we should understand what's going on in Community Power. That's one person's point of view. Thank you.
All right, well, thanks, Colin. And yes, I agree that Community Power should be doing a better job of communicating. And probably I need to play some kind of role in making sure that communication happens. But the key element is that Community Power does not send out electric bills. Ever-source does. And there's no provision for ever-source to include a leaflet from Community Power in their monthly electric bill. So we have to work on communicating better. And I pledge to work with the Energy Committee and figure out a way to make that happen.
Rich Epstein? So there's always a chance my recollection is wrong, but I thought we changed the default energy source when people have, are ready to pick... When they set up their bill. And it was changed from ever-source to Community Power. Is there now reason to reconsider what that default should be?
Okay, well, the word default is a funny word in this case because the default supplier is still ever-source. But 71% of the town was switched over a year ago to Community Power. And for the first year under Community Power, there were massive savings relative to ever-source. It's just recently that the tide has turned. And it may well turn back again. If you remember what happened in 2022 when natural gas prices spiked and the ever-source rate tripled in a very short period, ever-source was the most expensive game in town. And everyone else was cheaper. Now, ever-source has a temporary advantage. And part of the reason for that is that ever-source has adopted the same power purchasing procedures that Community Power pioneered. So Community Power was first out of the gate with those new-style power purchasing procedures. And of course, all the utilities want to copy Community Power. And there are, Community Power is not quite as big as ever-source, but it's actually the second-largest power supplier in the state in terms of the number of customers. And I don't want to spend too much of your time explaining why Community Power is now more expensive. But there is a reason. And it's hopefully just a temporary phenomenon that will go away. And I look forward to the day when we can switch back to Community Power because they'll be once again the cheapest.
Jamie, you and I talked about, you just said you'll have the Energy Committee write something up explaining this.
Absolutely.
We talked about perhaps adding something, explaining to the residents how they can make the change back to ever-source if they decide they want to.
Well, yeah, that's an essential piece of the article that we'll write because we want to give people the choice to switch back if they decide to. And once they know how to switch back to ever-source, they'll also know how to switch once again to Community Power.
Yep. And perhaps we can keep a regular little box in Municipal Matters every month showing the different rates.
Yeah, we certainly could.
Well, I guess they don't change again until February, you said, but they get announced in December?
Well, there's a six-month cycle. So the current rate period began August 1st. The rates were announced at the end of June. So they're announced a little more than a month ahead of when they take effect. So six months later, at the end of December, new rates will be announced again and those will take effect at the beginning of February. So we could just do Municipal Matters twice a year. But we're happy to do it more often if there's a need to.
Perfect. Thank you. Thanks, Jamie.
All right, well, thank you as well.
To my question, so to have achieved a 71%, I thought something changed. Maybe default isn't the right word. But something changed that made it so much easier for people to go to ever-source versus stay. And that was the one thing, I guess I was trying to understand, is there reason to look at that to see if whatever we did then, we should revisit?
Okay, well, I'm, Rich, I'm not exactly sure how to answer your question, but to make an attempt, we switched 71% of the town over to Community Power in March of 2024 because we looked at the track record of Community Power for the prior 12 months. And they had beat ever-source substantially for every one of those 12 months. And we expected that to continue. And in fact, it did continue for another 12 months. So at this point, it's, I don't believe it's possible to switch the entire town automatically back to ever-source. People have to do it on an individual basis. So what we can do is we can, we can show people how to do that if they choose to. And we can show them one-on-one if necessary. But, and anyone can come to an Energy Committee meeting and learn all the details right from square one. But we'll start with Municipal Matters in the Intertown to get the word out.
Thank you, Jamie.
All right, thank you as well.
Okay. Next, we've got Sam and Adam that are gonna, you've got a couple of topics, starting off with RFP for the Public Works Building.
Yes, we do. You got a three-course meal of Public Works things tonight. So we have the RFP, the land survey, and then we'll go over the building's asset study. So the RFP, we weren't actually sure. We were going to have a copy of it for you guys tonight. We got it done right before we came up here. This has kind of involved a couple hours over the last couple days and has been many different renditions of it. And we've gotten a little bit numb to it in that aspect of, it feels like that's all we've been staring at, is either something for an RFP, the survey, or for the study. So what we'd really like is, this is still in kind of draft form, so we're kind of passing it over to the Selectmen to see what you folks think about it. And we'd really like to try to have this out by the middle of August. So we were hoping that over the next couple days and weekend, the Selectmen could review it and kind of get back to us with thoughts and edits on it. And then we could come back to the next Selectmen's meeting and try to finalize it to get it sent out. We tried to cover and leave it open enough that we were looking at the entire complex of Public Works, not just trying to resolve one little building problem or something like that, like we talked about at the last Selectmen's meeting. And then we also put a part in there about potentially, with the office space that may be added to Public Works, taking on additional town employees at this facility, potentially from like the town office, based on if we lose the town administrator's office on the first floor. There was conversations about Sid Crook being split and all that. And we had had the conversations of, do we really want to go down that road of losing that critical meeting space? So we tried to add that in there so we could see when we kind of get into the plans of all this, that maybe we could house a couple additional offices in a new building to then maybe not lose Sid Crook. But I think that's kind of, the meat of it is obviously the focus on Public Works Building, getting the lost base space back, the office space, lunchroom, locker rooms for the crews, and then just kind of looking over the site in general to make sure there isn't something that we're missing or a better way to lay it out and set it up.
Do either one of you have any questions?
I would just add too that we used the RFP that Colliers did for the design service request for the police station as a base point. Obviously, we paid good money to have that RFP done, so we tried to get our dollars out of it. So hopefully, you'll see a lot of consistency there.
Can I ask, do we have in here for them to review the possibility of adding a police station down there?
Currently, in its state, no. It does not have that added in it. Based on the information we had gone from ever-source, we felt that it wasn't possible for police to go there and still have future growth of Public Works and not, you know, cut ourselves nearsighted, so.
The ever-source situation seems like we're not going to have a super-clear answer on whether any buildings can be built under the transmission lines right away. We received an email yesterday from the transmission engineer, I believe, that was rather cryptic. And I think at some point, we should probably have Town Council review the easement language. More or less, what it said was that the easement language from 1917 doesn't explicitly say we can't put buildings there, but they don't think we should because maybe someday they'll have to update the voltage of the lines and buildings wouldn't be able to be under that. In my reading through that, that says that they're trying to assert a right that they haven't actually acquired from us yet. And so we would sort of be acquiescing that potential usability of that land for, at this point, no compensation. So I think that's something we have to think about. I think obviously, we want to work well with ever-source. We're going to be a neighbor and a landowner with them long-term. But if that means to make the site work, that we need to encroach on something that right now we have the right to, you know, I think that's a conversation we have to have or the town likely needs to be compensated in some way. And maybe there can be a negotiation there of how that could happen. But it was an interesting email that really didn't help us determine whether there was more usable land or not.
The easement dates from 1917?
That's what they said.
Can I ask what you folks are thinking in terms of having as part of this proposal, that they at least look into the possibility of whether or not it is feasible to add another structure that would house a police department?
I don't think it hurts.
Yeah, we're not, I'm not closed to it at all. Public Works is happy to try to take on any other town departments that we can. So I don't want to...
Include more in this than we may necessarily need.
Absolutely.
And first, how we want to structure what they give us? Do we want them to give us sort of a menued proposal so that if that complicates the situation and the budget is doubled, we want to know that? Or, okay.
Yeah, options. Thanks, guys, for this. Okay.
And the only other thing I would add is I think, this is probably the sentiment of both of us at this point, I think we're accepting the fact that this may not be something that we can push through for this year, that there may be, you know, a longer planning process than we have time for with the three or four months left. So we're trying to keep going so that there's still potential for that. But I think we are getting closer to that. And I think the conversations of, does this facility need to accommodate another municipal function, whether it's police or something else, is something that needs some conversation. That's obviously not a foregone conclusion. It's, you know, us saying, hey, we see tonight that you want to, or you're being asked to reserve this meeting space for several months for AARP. If we lose this meeting space for several months each winter and we don't have the meeting space of the Sid Crook Room, I'm not sure how we can, you know, function on a day-to-day basis. So those are probably conversations that are going to slow down this process. But I think we both understand that those conversations are meaningful enough that that may be worth, if it's a year that this has to happen, then...
I think also adding to that too is talking with my employees to kind of say that that's a potential. And so they're probably the ones that are suffering the most, obviously, just working off trailers and things. And I think they remain in good spirits and they're a resilient group of people that understand that. And, you know, the kind of common phrase is that we'd all rather just do it once and do it right than kind of just get something through just to get a roof back over our head. And they know that, they agree with that. We've talked a lot about how... They all understand that, you know, Public Works has kind of just always reactively grown and never really stepped back and looked at the bigger picture of it. So they understand and, you know, like I said, Adam was saying, we understand too. And I think if that's the right decision for the town, which I think it is, to always make sure we're looking at all the different options, then absolutely fast, wait a little longer, we'll wait a little longer, so.
Do you think it's going to be a challenge getting people to respond to this RFP? Do you think people are backed up now or...?
It could be. I mean, most, most projects that are looking to move forward for next year's town meeting, they've already gone out to Design Services. So the complexity of what we're requesting will weigh into that a bit. That being said, obviously, there's a lot of unknown futures for federal projects and things. So for architects and designers that work in the government field, they may have lost some projects too that, you know, it's hard to tell.
How fast do you need a response from us on this?
If you could have it to us by Monday or Tuesday with some thoughts, that would be great because if we are going to try to get it out...
Even if it's next Wednesday, that gives us another week to incorporate thoughts, trying to get it to you a couple days before your next meeting. So you have time to look at it before.
Again, apologies on getting it to you late. It was just one of those things that we felt it wasn't quite ready to be brought to you until just before, so.
Which is also probably a good segue into the Horizons. So the day after our last meeting, when we were here talking about it, I was thinking about the fact that the last time we requested a survey on a piece of property, we were on their list for three months. And so I called Horizons, who did the survey on the Garvey, or the wetlands delineation on the Garvey property, and who we were on retainer for at the time in case the Garvey went through a town meeting so that it was faster. They are on a two-to-three-month waiting period right now. So I asked Will Davis to put together a proposal to survey the Public Works property and do a wetlands delineation. He got it to me at 6:40, or 5:45 tonight, so I'm sorry that you didn't get that before, but I did get you hard copies. No matter what happens on Public Works, we're going to need the survey and the existing conditions for the designers. So I think it's something we do have to get in the queue on. The wetlands delineation came out to, I think it was $1,200. And the boundary and existing condition survey is $11,000 for a total of $12,200. And if this is something that you want to review and think about over the next two weeks, I think that's fine. I think Will is willing to keep us on the list for a couple of weeks so that we don't get out of line, so to speak. The issue with the wetlands delineation is that if it doesn't happen before winter, it can become difficult to do and we could have to wait till spring, so.
All right, well, I appreciate you both getting the ball rolling on this. That's, that's the important part. Either one of you have any questions? Or do you want to take some time to review? Yep. Okay. Okay. Excellent. All right. I guess we are at public comment. Does anybody have any public comments tonight for anything that's not on our agenda? Or if you'd like to ask any questions on what Sam and Adam have just prepared, presented?
Rich Epstein, I didn't see on the agenda anything about the dispatch center study. Is that still...?
That will, Ashley's going to be back next week. And so she'll take that up when she comes back next week.
Thank you.
And I might as well just say, and I have permission to say, Ashley will be back on Monday, the 11th. She's, she feels very good and she's been having meetings with her doctors and she will be back on the 11th.
That's great. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
It has come to my attention that the Pleasant Lake Protective Association is proposing to do something at Elkins. And I think Putnam knows about it. And perhaps you can talk about what they want to do?
Hi, I'm Tylee Toy. I am a member of the PLPA, the Pleasant Lake Protective Association. And I've also been working at Elkins Beach for the summer. So it's been a goal of ours this year to try to get these information packets into everyone that's in our watershed. And I realized after spending so much time at the beach that that's a whole new population of awesome people that use and love the lake that probably aren't in our membership catalog. So I had suggested to Putnam, maybe we could have an event, an educational event down at the beach where we could share more information with more people that use and love the beach. So...
And I've been, so Putnam, Kidera Recreation Director, I've been working with the PLPA, Little Lakes Onopoeia Protective Association, the Lakes Onopoeia Protective Association in regards to cyanobacteria education, information. And I think this was an offshoot of trying to get more information out to the general public about lake health in general. But cyanobacteria, and this was an opportunity to be able to utilize people at the beach right there, when they're there, to be able to educate them about that. And I apologize for the last-minute nature of it kind of coming up. So, but we're thinking about it being educationally, information about lake health and PLPA's role. I had talked about trying to do a similar thing with Little Lakes Onopoeia Protective Association at Buckland. They do have, you know, some signage down there. So I think, again... They do have, you know, some signage down there, so I think, again, I see it as a really good partnership to be able to continue to be good stewards of the lake and be able to get information out to people, and I think the thought was that it's really great to be able to do it right at the beach, to be able to have it be so kind of visual, and people can kind of interact with people at the actual location we're talking about. And so we didn't know if we needed to make an application, because we could put other under the application, so wanted to bring it to the selectmen for their consideration.
I think it probably would be a good idea to use the application, fill that out, and there's instructions on how to do it and what we need, so that would be really important, I think. So we have an idea of what you're doing. We don't want to set a precedent that, you know, you can do this, and someone else approaches us, and we say no, so let's, let's go the right route, okay?
Okay, so you would want to have the application to be considered at a future date?
Right, yeah, as soon as we've had an opportunity to look at it.
Okay. That makes sense.
I think you can totally do it. We just quickly reviewed our beach ordinance rules. It's can absolutely be done. I don't think you can sell stuff, but you can definitely have an informational session and fill up, and just check the other box and put Elkins Beach, because I just noticed this at the top. So you'll probably be the first.
Is it okay to give out stickers, or to give out promotional...
Right in here your thoughts, and then we'll review it against the beach ordinance.
Okay.
And we certainly appreciate everything...
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
You know, the lake hosts and everything else that the PLPA does, it's wonderful.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Any other public comment? All right. Old business, it's back to Sam and Adam.
Did you miss me? This is probably the most long-awaited one, and hopefully you guys are ready for a long meeting. We'll go through this page by page, 83.
Yeah.
I'm just kidding. Did the selectmen all have a chance to get through the memo that we sent out in regards to the building studies that was done? Hopefully? Yeah? Okay, great. So I obviously won't go through the memo kind of word for word, but there's a few things that I kind of wanted to hit on that are probably critical and important points. As you guys probably started to flip through the 83-page document, the first few pages are probably a little shell-shocking in prices of how much it's going to cost over, like, each five years, the first year being $4 million. Some of those numbers, I think, are inflated and not accurate, and some of them also include, like, the first year includes $1.1 million for the highway building, and so you're probably not going to spend that in 2025, but it's already listed in there. So I think some of those initial numbers can kind of be overwhelming and scare you when you look at them, but as you kind of go through the document, you'll understand what I'm saying, and you'll see some of those, and obviously, there'll be lots of questions around that. Happy to answer those as we go through. I kind of listed three major structures and hit on those in the memo that are kind of the most critical, because they're listed as, like, imminent failure, or should not be occupied, or things like that. Starting with the transfer station cottage, that one's listed as beyond repair and has a replacement cost of $550,000. Something to note is that that is an in-kind replacement. I don't think if we were to replace that building, we would ever just replace it with another cottage, so the $550,000 is kind of a odd number to, it's an odd place number, but, you know, Frank was not hired to give an opinion of what we should replace a building with. He was hired to assess these buildings and say, if it was going to fail, this is what it costs, this is what it would cost to rebuild it. So that $550,000, we could do that job with a garage with a bathroom, if we chose to go that way, for a lot less. I personally don't think that the building needs to be torn down. I think that's kind of why we're here tonight, is to talk about a few of those things. Bebe went with us, and archivist Jim Perkins went with us as well. We looked at the building. We went there three or four different times. I don't see anything in it, like we did the highway garage, right? It does not look like it's in imminent failure, and the building is still serving a functional service, right? I mean, it's a nice building that has good curb appeal. It is worth it to us, I think, to repair. I think we should get a structural engineer in to look at it, to maybe assess it so that we can make sure it is safe, based on the fact that in the report, it says that it is beyond repair. I think that there is deferred maintenance there that has happened over the last 20 to 30 years, where the building has not been well-maintained, but, you know, trying to change the tide on that and address those things is going to be the most important part. Another one was the old Main Street Cemetery Maintenance Shed, and that has a recommended replacement cost of $50,000. It doesn't specifically state what is wrong with the building. It just says that it's basically old, decrepit, and should be replaced, and it's going to cost $50,000. I think we all know that a shed, we could replace it with, would probably be $10,000 to $15,000. I don't think that that would really go great with the characteristics of Old Main Street Cemetery, and we also feel, based on what we've seen on that building and meeting there with my facilities worker, Matt, that we could do some repairs to it for a few thousand dollars, and the building would be structurally fine. Obviously, I think, once we get through this, again, we should have a structural engineer probably come out just to verify that they would agree with those things. I think that these are the biggest concerns, just based on safety, but... Yeah?
The only thing I would add to that is, I think, when we visited both of those, and Bebe went with us on both of them, there's the evaluation of, do they actually meet the needs that we are, that we need these facilities for? And they may not be, you know, absolutely perfect, but they're still meeting the needs of the users. They may have things that need to be upgraded, but the riding lawnmower and the weed whacker still can be safely stored in there. And so, Sam was saying, with the cosmetic repairs, or the minor structural repairs, to make sure that they're safe, they are still actually serving the function that we need them to, which is an important, I think that's an important distinguishment between something like the highway garage that was not really still serving the needs and has a structural issue that's catastrophic, that sort of differentiates between these buildings and the highway.
Thank you. The last one, being the brush and metal facility, it's listed as not suitable for occupancy, but it's just listed in poor condition and says unsuitable for occupancy, and that's kind of all it says. I don't, I can't speak to what, why Frank determined that, or what made him determine that, but that's where it's come to, and so we have to now kind of decide what we'd like to do with a structure like that. That's a building that he has listed at $25,000 to replace, and while it might be ugly and imperfect, it doesn't mean that it's not usable or not still serving its purpose, right? So something like that. I don't think it's a $25,000 replacement. Those numbers are all lumped into those first initial pages that kind of are large numbers that can be kind of daunting, especially as the person that oversees facilities, it was, it did the same thing to me. And then once you start going through the report, that's when I think you'll understand kind of where we're coming from, where a building, I wrote a note on here, imperfect, ugly, and utilitarian are still okay, right? So some of these structures are. You know, we have a couple buildings, I'll get to in a minute, that we've been working on that are just cold storage buildings that needed maintenance, but they're not, you know, it's a building that's out of the public eye, it's off to the side, and it doesn't have to be absolutely perfect all the time, right?
Gee, how Heidi describes me sometimes.
So you're relating to our memo? I'm glad to hear that. So some of the other things, the, now that we have the report and it's finalized, and we'll have it to you guys digitally as well, we're working already at Public Works to implement this into the iWork software, and how we can use the maintenance sections of it and things like that to, you know, help correct these things, so we're not running into maintenance issues down the road, right? We're not having deferred maintenance, or things that are caught, or caught too late, or that just aren't getting done. I think realizing that the town has 32 buildings, regardless of how big or small they are, is notable, right? And that's a lot for one person to kind of just handle, or one or two people, so having this report, regardless how we feel about it, is great to kind of have a roadmap, right? We don't have to stop at all the attractions, but there's a roadmap in place that kind of shows us what those attractions are. And so Nancy's taken a lot of classes on the iWork software, and she's already working on implementing some of this into it, and so I think that as we go forward, that will be extremely helpful, so. I kind of have a note in here about cost estimates. A couple examples that I just wanted to hit on that I think are important is, the Academy Building Roof is listed at a $65,000 replacement. We recently got a few contractors in, because we think it needs to be replaced sooner than the report says, and those range between $27,000 and $37,000 to replace the roof. So that's just some of those differences that we were talking about. One that we're actively working on is the wastewater cold storage building. It's a 24-by-24 garage. It does need a roof, paint, and some siding. That's what's listed. We're going to re-roof it, paint it, do some trim work, replace, I think, one of the windows, and we're doing it for about $3,000, but the report has it listed as a $34,000 job. So I think that also is testament to doing work in-house versus hiring contractors to do all the work. And I think those are kind of things that we're proud of as Public Works employees, but also kind of hanging our hats on as far as this report, and kind of, those big numbers aren't as scary when we kind of look at how we can tackle them, maybe piece by piece, or with in-house work, or in phased-in approaches, so.
And with the in-house work, one column that you'll notice is really not filled out throughout the whole document, was one that we asked them to add near the end, that hopefully, over time, can be filled in. I don't think it's something that we can expect to be filled in anytime immediately, but whether or not Public Works feels like they can tackle the project themselves without going out to the contractor, to sort of differentiate between those, because as Sam said, like the sewer garage, that's a very, you know, simple, in many ways, project for Matt to take on, but there are a lot more projects like that in here. But a lot of that assessment will have to take place at the time when the work is being done. What's the capacity? What other projects do they have going on? Who's on staff at that point? The, you know, what is their capacity? So I'm not sure that anyone is comfortable making those determinations now for projects that might be five and 10 years down the road.
I see that column here in the report, so is that a field in the software as well?
No, because the software doesn't really, like, utilize, it's not going to, like, basically copy and paste this report into it. It's something that we'll use this digital, a digital version of this to kind of work through with our facility worker, regardless who that is, and myself, to kind of figure out what we think these are, and maybe like the shorter range, and then kind of take it off in bite-sized pieces. Because I think, you know, one year, we might have the ability to paint the town offices in-house, but, you know, two years later, we may not be able to, depending on what projects are happening and things like that. So there's times that we can take two or three highway workers and put them towards facilities, and then there's times that we can't lose anybody out of highway, because we just are too busy, you know, based on storms, plant projects, things like that, and we have to keep them to highway work and streets, so, yeah.
I was going to ask about that resource capability. I was also going to ask, we paid for this report to be able to give you enough information to put into the software that we purchased to be able to use. Do you feel like you've got enough information in here to use the software, the way it's supposed to be used?
I think, to answer that question just shortly, yes. There is enough information here to fill in the software to do it. I think that the iWorks program is more on a maintenance and, like, kind of reminder software, not a capital outlay plan, right? We already have a CIP, so that will be a lot of my legwork over the next few years, is trying to determine what is the cost of these projects, and, you know, which part comes when, right?
But a lot of these projects won't land in the CIP. If they're maintenance, and they don't meet the, I think this year, the threshold will be $50,000, they wouldn't typically. And this plan goes out 30 years?
Yep.
CIP is generally 10 years. So there may be, they may not mirror each other. And, I mean, just from your readability of the document, and the public, I'm sure will be looking at it, too, there are some inconsistencies in where information is housed in different buildings. You know, some, there's a maintenance task column. The maintenance tasks don't always appear in the maintenance task, maintenance task column. Sometimes it's in the comment. We met with the consultant and went over our concerns there. They felt like this was still the best way to present it, but just be aware that there may be some components that don't align with the column heading that you think they may align with.
There also are some, oh, sorry, go ahead, Bebe.
I know there are members of the public that are chomping at the bit to see this, so I assume we're posting this on our website, along with your memo here?
Yep, correct. Yep, we actually, I thought I had sent the document off to be posted to the website. That was my error, so I apologize. I was just going to say something.
I would also offer, we can print one for the front desk. It's a difficult document to look at digitally. That being said, it's 100 pages of 11 by 17, so we certainly can't print, you know, copies for everybody, but we can make sure there's one at the front desk if somebody wants to come in and look at a real one.
So I think, like I was saying in the beginning, kind of just circling back and wrapping this up, I think the next steps is going to be to commission a structural engineer again, just to come out and review the buildings that are most critical, and then we're just going to continue to use the document as a reference tool, and not always, you know, we'll check and verify numbers. So I don't doubt that some of these projects need to be done, right? Like roofs need to be replaced, and buildings need maintenance and things, but it will be up to us to kind of go out and find those quotes and see what work we can do, and, you know, do those cost estimates, and compare to them to what we can do in-house versus hiring out. And then it's going to be kind of making a repair matrix to try to figure out what is the priority, and what are our next steps for it. Obviously, we understand, we, and no municipality could take on $2 million, $3 million at the drop of a hat to say, okay, we're going to just start all these projects, nor do we have the resources to manage those projects, right? If you guys even were to get that money, I don't have the ability, or the town really doesn't have the ability to oversee that many projects at one time, so trying to come up with the best path forward and how we're going to kind of handle those is all part of just absorbing this document and kind of coming up with our plan to execute it and use it, so.
Well, we've got a roadmap to do it. Do either one of you have any other questions? We have a lot of homework.
That you do. I can tell you, it's not easy to take on a lot of it in any one chunk, but...
All right. All right. Next, Putnam, oh, I'm sorry, Bob, you have a question?
Bob Bowers, resident of New London. Bob Harrington, back in about 2020, mentioned that the stump dump should have, by state standards, I thought he said, a facility of some sort with running water and bathroom facilities, and I understand that's really only used maybe a day a week. Is that something that is important or part of this study, that they should have that available to them?
I think that's kind of a loaded question that's been evolving for me. I went to a couple of classes, I kind of talked about transfer stations, brush and metal facilities, and one of them had about 500 people from all around the state that worked at brush and metal facilities, and of those, less than a third of them actually had facilities that had running water and things like that. It's not a standard. The transfer station employees, people were amazed that we actually had a facility that was heated and had running water at our transfer station alone. So I don't think it's a high priority. We try to always give an employee, like, a town truck when they're up there, so if it's hot, they have AC, things like that, they can take breaks, we'll switch out with people, so.
Thank you very much. This is Bob Harrington, mentioned it, and I thought I would follow up.
Yeah, no, appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Putnam and Jackie, updates on the swing set?
All right. Hi, everybody. Jackie Christensen, Chair of New London REC, and we've come a couple times now to discuss the swing set project at Elkins, and I've got forward momentum here. The commission met on Monday, and we voted unanimously to proceed with the swing set replacement, utilizing a design from UltiPlay. Chris Martin is our contact there, and, you know, after doing a site visit with him and having a follow-up, gosh, I think it was an hour and a half Zoom call, because, again, we're trying to think of this in phases. There's the, you know, future parity swing set replacement, and then there's the, you know, larger vision for what we might do as we replace other equipment. But one thing we learned about, you know, if you think about the Elkins Play area, there's almost two different areas, kind of separated by a beautiful birch tree that's right in the middle, and we don't want to remove that tree. We don't want to get into, you know, we're close to the shoreline, it also, you know, provides shade, so we don't want to remove that tree, but that does mean we have kind of more limited space on the side where it makes sense to have swings, because by modern standards, you know, when you think about the usage area, swing sets take up a lot of footprint. So when you think about the height of the swing, let's say it's eight feet from the top to where the seat is, you'd need to have 16 feet in the front, 16 feet in the back, and then eight feet on either side for that whole footprint. And so that means, you know, we would be able to fit safely, the design that you see in our, in our follow-up document, two belts... in our, in our follow-up document, two-belt swings as well as a toddler bucket swing in a, you know, in an updated structure. So that is the design that the commission reviewed, discussed on Monday, and voted to proceed with. Total cost is coming actually below the $14,400 that we requested from the Capital Reserve Fund for the equipment, the surfacing and the install. We're talking $11,160. And the timeline works. We could get on their schedule and have it in place before the ground freezes so that it is ready for playing, probably still for, you know, that, that last month of fall, and then early in the spring. So we're feeling good about that decision. I put in, we put in some next steps in here on, you know, getting this invoice signed to get that equipment ordered and get on the UltiPlay schedule ASAP. We do need to submit the shoreline permit by notification, but because we're not adding any impervious, right, surfacing, or we're not adding, we're not removing any of those trees, right? We believe that will be pretty straightforward. Putnam reminded me, there is a cost for that. I believe it's what, less than 500, right?
I think it's 200.
$200. So we would take that from the 14,400 that, from the Capital Reserve. We can coordinate with the Department of Public Works to remove the old swing set as soon as their schedule permits. And there's no real coordination that has to happen, you know, that's, we can do that right away and remove that, those wooden structures that are there right now, not being utilized. Now, one thing, and, and I think there's been some procedural discussion that happened since Monday, because we do want to ask UltiPlay to come back with an architect to do a landscape plan, to again, think more big picture, right? Because other elements that we would like to add to this area in the future include like a basket swing, which is a really cool swing that is both adaptive and then also inclusive. And then we'd like to have a new climbing structure and/or slides, you know, still, still trying to dream up what, what is the right piece of equipment there. But, and we want to think about the access from the parking lot to the playground. And so that's the reason why we would want an architect to come and do a landscape plan. Chris has told us that that would be, you know, up to $2,000. And so I do think we, we need to ask you for a vote that we could utilize $2,000 from the Capital Reserve Fund. In our mind, you know, it works out because we're still under the 14,400, but we want to make sure we're doing everything above board, and we'd like to get that scheduled with them before, again, the, the winter and the ground freezes and, and snow is piling up. So that, that's an ask for today. What else am I looking at? Oh, oh, go ahead, Putnam. What did you say?
Yeah, just have the remaining, if another ask would be to have any leftover funds in the original $14,400 request would go towards the future money for the future parts or phases of the playground, to be able to utilize that money as kind of a seed for using fundraising for the next steps.
Okay, hold on.
Yeah, go ahead.
How many numbers you're throwing around?
Sorry, yeah, go ahead.
All right. We've already approved up to 14,400, right?
Correct.
And so you're gonna need 11,160 for the swing set.
Yep.
And, and you're, and you're saying, Lynn, you're saying we have to vote again on approving up to 2,000?
My question is, and I thought you were gonna look for this, when you approved the 14,000, I think you approved it for the swing set.
Yeah.
So if we're gonna use it for anything else?
Yeah.
You guys need to talk about that. But you also need to, did you look at that?
I think it was for the swing.
For the swing set. So, but you also have to look at the Capital Reserve. It's a recreation equipment Capital Reserve. So I have to look at what, how it was set up. I don't have that in front of me. If that was set up for just equipment, or was it set up for various recreation facilities?
Okay.
We can probably use it then for a pathway and a study and, and all that, so if you can just let me take a look at that.
We can do, bring that back to the next meeting.
Yep, no problem.
At least right now, you've got the money that you need to start ordering the swing set.
Correct, correct. And then the last thing I'll just say here, well, two last things. So one of the reasons we're excited about working with UltiPlay is they provide for free online fundraising tools and, you know, consultation. And so we're really excited to get that next phase, have a visual, have a link to a site that can educate the whole community on what we're talking about and also raise some funds for it, so that, we'll have an update on that in the future as we start to put that together. But it's pretty slick. I mean, as far as, you know, you can have the site plans, you can have all the equipment and have a whole write-up about it in addition to raising funds. And then the last thing I'll just end with is, we did have Chris take a look at the Buckland play structure. And by his estimates, and he was jumping around on it, he sees about 10 years plus left before that would be replaced. So I don't see that as being imminent, we need to get that replaced, whereas the arch and the monkey bars and the parallel bars at the, at Elkins, I think, have a, a shorter time on, on this earth. So, so we're gonna just proceed with some maintenance recommendations. There was a little bit of rust that needed to be patched up, and, and so, so that's the update for Buckland.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Great. Thanks, guys.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Next thing on the agenda is just a statement. So the town has been named as a party in a civil action filed by Continuum Health Services, development, the developer of the property near the hospital. The suit also names the water precinct and Underwood Engineers and Adam Ricker and Rob Thorpe, and appears to relate to the denial of precinct water service for the proposed development. Our insurance provider, Primex, will be representing and defending the town and Adam in this matter. At this time, we are unable to provide additional information and will not be taking questions as the case is ongoing. Okay. And the next is the Budget Committee memo. So I assume the two of you have had the chance to review the memo that we got from the Budget Committee on some changes that they'd like to make in their procedures. So I just figure we, we could just chat a little bit about what initial, any initial thoughts, and then maybe we talk about the idea of having a joint meeting with the Budget Committee to review their recommendations. So who would like to go first?
Not me.
Rich, you sat, you're the Budget Committee member and you sat through the meeting, so.
Yeah, you know, Charlie, I was hoping if you wouldn't mind, you could kind of give us a little bit of your thoughts since you were sort of one of the key people who put that together.
Charlie Kelsey, Budget Committee member. Yeah, I was the principal architect along with input from Chris Lorio to a document that you all have. The Budget Committee reviewed that document, had a very robust discussion about it, and essentially wanted to make sure that we got input from the Select Board relative to the changes that we're pursuing with the intention also to get department head input relative to how they view some of the recommendations that we're making. The intention behind this effort is to improve the budget process that the Budget Committee goes through. Number one, to invest more time in a more deliberate way to analyzing budget, gathering data, and importantly, to utilize the time of department heads in an efficient manner, but a complete manner and a consistent manner. And specifically that we recommend, recommended and adopted that we'd have a point person, liaison to each of the departments as a primary person who would meet with that department head and any other Budget Committee members who wish to attend could, but that the liaison from the Budget Committee would go with a preset list of questions that would've been shared with the department head well in advance, so that those could be addressed. And that format would be consistent from department to department. There might be some specific components that might be different based on the department itself, however, trying to come up with a universal format that we could follow that would be efficient utilization of time, but more importantly, give appropriate and important data to help inform the committee. The liaison along with the input of the department head would be responsible for a report together that would come back to the Budget Committee so that all members had all the information. And part of the rationale behind that is to ensure that we're respectful of time and that I might have a set of questions I might want to ask, and then another committee member might have another set of questions they might want to ask, and they might want to do it on another day. And rather than have a disjointed process, have a very specific process, intentional in terms of what's asked, and, and do it in a reasonable timeframe. The other recommendations that were included, looked at a schedule that distributes the budget review over a longer period of time past, without recanting the past other than to say, we're trying, we were trying to fit a, you know, a 10-pound bucket of nails into a thimble relative to having a budget reviewed, really discussed and debated, and done in a manner that allowed for exchange of ideas and, and information so the Budget Committee could be better informed. And, and likely everyone could be better informed. So there's a series of meetings that are recommended. There are some dates that were just kind of earmarked for those meetings. And they extended to include a more complete review of, of revenue, which typically we've not done a lot of, you know, general review. And the intention here being that we, we could be better at looking at revenue in a more complete way and with potentially other options that may not have been considered at this point in time or have been left to hope as a strategy. Lastly, a, to take a more strategic approach. No news to anyone on the Select Board that we're facing significant expenditures, capital in particular, over the next several years. And being, being better in terms of how do we think about those. Part of that recommendation was to really be a little more deliberate in the CIP process. I am the budget representative on that committee. And, and really look, and I think the report that Sam and Adam spoke to really is a really good input document for us. I think that we have a responsibility to think about prioritization relative to the limited resources of the town and how we finance that. What portion is operating budget consideration, what portion is bonded debt financed? What are the implications of that? And lastly, there is a part in here to do some forecasting, financial forecast modeling. And in doing that, reflect out also what the impact on the tax rate would be. Purpose behind all of it is to have a general and better understanding of the magnitude of expenditure and how the town might think about it, but specifically the Budget Committee might as well. So in sum, the other recommendation was related to the Select Board providing a set of guidelines to the town administrator, to Ashley, and to the department heads relative to budget preparation. Prior, the approach that was represented by Kim Holquest was that she did not provide a lot of direction because she didn't want to limit, and I don't want to misquote her, but this is what I heard, didn't want to limit what a department head might submit as a budget, in their budget, based on what they really feel they need. And that, that's, that's fine. The thought process is if guidelines could be provided by the Select Board, that's your decision whether you would or wouldn't do that. But this recommends, recommends that there is some guideline provided to them so that that's a consistent request. And it would be great if we were doing that collectively. So that's in sum, Rich, I think, where we landed. Our last next steps were to get input relative to a set of questions that were a preliminary draft in this document that would be presented to department heads and, and get that established so that the meetings with department heads could, could begin, and that we would start that, we're kind of behind the eight ball already timing-wise, but to start that in August and continue it through September to align with the budget process itself. So I think that fairly represents it. Any Budget Committee members that are here want to add, I welcome your support and input.
Thank you, Charlie. Yeah, I, I think what Charlie and Chris are working on is terrific in terms of, you know, just perhaps a more rigorous analysis of our budget, the, the overall picture of the budget, and a methodology for kind of analyzing it and, and making decisions that are more data-driven, if you will.
I, I agree with some of the recommendations in here, Charlie, not all of them. And I think because of the number of them, I would just be concerned about trying to implement all of them at once. And so I wonder if you've had any thoughts about phasing some of these in over time? I like the idea of having Budget Committee members be liaisons with department heads. I think Chris has said that that was done in the past that way, but my concern still is taking up the time of the department heads. I still don't see how this takes up less time. But that perhaps could be phased in this year and see if it really does save, save their time. We've started to get some feedback from department heads. I think there's a concern of a lack of, a feeling that there's a lack of trust, and that's, that's a tough one for them to get over. But the idea of the liaisons from the Budget Committee meeting with department heads and kind of becoming their sponsors, I think will really bridge that gap. Having those, building those relationships, I think, is really important. And I know I've done that over the last two years in meeting with all the department heads and really understanding what their needs are for their departments. And they're not just spending money foolishly, no matter what anybody thinks. So those are my, my thoughts. We don't have all of the members of the Budget Committee here today, so I, I would suggest, I'm fine with us having a meeting with them. I don't know if you're running out of time, if you think we can, you know, you're already up to you, but I, I would be fine with that.
Two thoughts. We did talk candidly while we was at the meeting about the issue of trust, and I tried to express the best of my ability at that time, my concern about that and what was the foundation for that. And this process is, is designed to try to be more complete in our process, to be forward-thinking, to have a group, and really, all of us, citizenry as well as the Select Board, to have, as complete a picture of the financial needs. And that we, how we enter into that and how we deliberate is, and doing that, I guess, in a civil way is imperative. I don't know that it will, I don't know if it'll save a lot of more time at this point, but I don't think we'll know until we do something. If, if this is viewed as not constructive?
Yep.
Or, or not a good utilization of time or process, then that would be helpful input. You know, the Budget Committee, I think universally, shared a desire to be You know, the Budget Committee, I think universally, shared a desire to be better. And I think there's enough, I've had enough feedback from people to say that we're not really very effective. Why, why have a Budget Committee at all? What do you do, other than just push stuff around and never make, make really any complete headway? And headway isn't necessarily a reduction.
Yeah.
Headway is. And what I tried to articulate then was that it isn't a question of, of tax rates going up. Tax rates are going to go up, and we have a lot of competing demands for the tax dollars. So the question is, how, how can that occur in, in a manner that smoothes the line or curve of increase in a way that becomes sustainable? That's a better approach than saying, what, what can we cut? Because we, we may get at points, as this board may have to say, we need to cut. And we want to avoid that to the greatest extent possible. So I don't really know the answer to the question of, is it going to save time? It may not initially, but I think we would get a feel for how constructive is the process by starting and, and taking an approach that's consistent to each department and, and then see where that goes. And adjust it or eliminate it if it doesn't serve its purpose or intent.
Yep. I really appreciate all the time you've taken on this, Charlie.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
And, and as far as meeting, I, I'm sure, we would love to meet with the Select Board and have a really open, candid.
Yeah.
And more complete conversation, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, because I think it's worth hearing from all the Budget Committee members, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
You know, I, I would just say, Charlie, that I, I do think any description that this is a matter of a lack of trust is, is an unfortunate term, because I don't think this is about trust. I think this is about the municipal Budget Committee doing their job, you know, effectively. And it's, it's not meant in any way to be insulting or anything else, but the municipal Budget Committee has a job to do, as do all of our department heads, as does the Select Board. And I just see this as you folks just trying to do your job more effectively.
Okay, so I'll coordinate with Chris, and we'll try to figure out a, a time that we can get together, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. Okay. Okay, I think that's all for that topic. And, all right. All right. Lynn, you're giving us the town administrator's report.
I'm giving you a very brief town administrator's report. I'm glad to hear that Ashley's coming back. Will and I have been kind of juggling back and forth between us, and we've, I think we've managed to not have the place burned down while she's gone. But it is complicated and, and hard to do our jobs while we're trying to just, you know, hit the high points of, of anything she has going on. The one thing I did want to mention, though, is that the field work for the audit is done. It took them three full days to do it. When the audit is complete, which is sometime in November, Plodzik and Sanderson would like to present to the board. So they would, it would be a 20-minute presentation on their process and their findings, and I think that's important, especially, you know, with the, the concern for our financial well-being of the town, that they, you know, everybody can hear how they go about looking at that and, and where they draw their conclusions. So I'll have more on that as we get closer. And that kind of was it.
Okay. Thank you, Lynn and Will, for holding down the fort for this, for these couple of weeks. Really appreciate it. Okay. Any committee meetings, reports?
The Board of Firewords met on August 4th, and Chief Lyons reported that there were 552 calls to date, 43 more than in 2024. He reviewed a tentative budget, and he still needs to go through some of the numbers with Lynn. They discussed the policy of distance and response times for the fire department personnel. Right now, a volunteer must live in a contiguous town, and response time to department, no more than 25 minutes. But considering the long distance that some contiguous, contiguous towns are, like North Wilmette, for example, and yet non-contiguous towns like Andover may be closer. So they're going to review that. There was also discussion of overtime for exempt employees. And then there was, we went into non-public to talk about a possible hire. They're still down one person for the fire department. I think that's about it. Highlight, anyway.
Nothing else? The planning board or anything like that?
No.
Okay. All right. Okay, so we've got a, a bunch of meeting minutes here to approve. Are you both ready to approve all of them?
I have a correction on the 23rd meeting minutes. It's Brandon Adams. He was listed as Brandon Adam. He needs an S on his name. And I think it's important that we have his correct name in the minutes. Okay?
Okay. All right, so could I have a motion to approve the minutes for June 18th, July 2nd, July 23rd as amended, July 25th, and July 31st?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. We are going into non-public. Could I have a motion to go, enter into non-public for RSA 91-A3 dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee or the disciplining of such employee? And also for consideration or negotiation of pending claims. This is RSA 91-A colon 32E, pending claims or litigation which has been threatened in writing or filed by or against this board, et cetera. Janet?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes, Anderson.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.